Good evening, everybody. We're going to get right into our meeting. Can we have approval of agenda for tonight's meeting? All those in favor?
Can I add an addition? Is that okay?
Yeah.
I was just looking for a quick verbal update on the budget process. That's all, just where we're at and where...
Okay. Where we're at?
Where we're at and passing the budget for the year. If we're finding any meetings for August or anything.
Okay. Put that under...
Unfinished business?
Number two? Nope, under committee of the whole. Keep going, next page.
Any disclosures of interest? Hearing none, no delegations. You got nothing, Nathan? No delegations?
Nope.
Okay, minutes of previous meetings. Resolution 193-21. Moved by Councillor Steffurek, seconded by Councillor Sales, that the minutes of the council and committee of the whole meeting held June 29, 2021 be accepted as circulated. Discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Resolution 194-21, moved by Councillor Morrow, seconded by Councillor McGrath, that the minutes of a special council meeting held July 13, 2021, be accepted as circulated. Discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Business arising from the minutes? Resolution 195-21, moved by Councillor Steffurek, seconded by Councillor Sales, that council accept the quotation from Simcoe Refrigeration, the amount of $10,779.11, excluding applicable taxes for repairs and startup in the Arena Ice Plant. Discussion? I'm just curious a bit about how that figure relates to previous years. Is it, you know, sort of the norm or...
Uh, that figure again, it's, uh... There's a lot that comes into play straight. Part of it is determining if, again, uh... When Simcoe's coming through, they're also going to be going to other towns along the route. So, Nipigon, Marathon, Terrace Bay.
Yeah.
So, that helps us share costs. Another component is, um, uh... What we need to fix at startup. Usually if there's anything more that we need to fix, uh, it's going to be a longer than anticipated startup, right? So, that, uh... Those factors, you know, play into account. If you want to determine like overall, um, what's, you know... Is this a deviation from what's typical? In order to do that, I'll have to ask staff to provide the previous year startup costs in order to see that.
That, that company has been doing this year for...
For the, uh... Recent number of years, that's, that's what's been happening. I know in the past, we were doing the startup internally, but I believe that has been, uh... Some years now that, uh, that has, um, happened. I don't know, Cecile, if you recall...
In 19, 19 would've been the first year.
19 was the first year that we did it?
Yeah.
So, prior to 2019, we were doing it internally.
Yeah.
And that's again because, uh... That startup process is, uh... You have to get staff really well trained on it. It's, uh... The main concern again is the ammonia plant inside the refrigeration area there.
Right.
If anything messes up, right, uh... It's quite dangerous. So, we want people who are very comfortable with it. And over time, you know, uh, this is something, uh... Where you could likely provide training, and that's something we have to weigh the cost and benefits for.
Okay, all those in favor? Carried. Resolution 196-21, moved by Councillor McGrath, seconded by Councillor Morrow, that council approve the expenditure, expenditure requests and approval to proceed from the Ontario Clean Water Agency for project management for electrical upgrades at describer wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $19,800, including applicable taxes. Discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Counsel for payment, resolution 197-21, moved by Councillor Steffurek, seconded by Councillor Sales, that checks issued on the general bank account in the month of June 2021 in the amount of $206,891.17 for general accounts payable be approved and ratified. Discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Oh, dear. Fire chief. Jeff?
Evening.
Resolution 198-21, moved by Councillor Steffurek, seconded by Councillor McGrath, the bank debits issued on the general bank account in the month of June 2021 in the amount of $50,995.42 for payroll be approved and ratified. Discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Resolution 199-21, moved by Councillor Morrow, seconded by Councillor Steffurek, the bank debits paid out of the general bank account in the month, in the month of June 2021 in the amount of $37,245.70 be approved and ratified. Discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Unfinished business? None. Other business? Resolution 200-21. Moved by Councillor Sales, seconded by Councillor McGrath, that bylaw 26-2021 being a bylaw to rescind bylaw 33-2002 and to adopt a new policy for the raising and lowering of flags be given first, second, third, and final reading and enacted. Discussion? What was the reasoning for this procedure here? Like, uh... Changing?
Uh, the existing raising and lowering of flags is, uh... Quite a outdated policy. It was quite, uh, uh... Plain where, uh, um... There wasn't again, uh... Any procedure, for instance, in place, supposing we had any residents that wanted to, uh, request, uh... Specific, uh... Flag that they would like to have flown. So, this kind of policy sets the grounds for that. And what we tried to do again with this policy is match exactly the same policy that's in Terrace Bay. So, this is going to be exactly the same for both townships. And again, it has a, a proper procedure again so that, uh... There's a, a policy in place with regard to, uh... What the expectations would be, again, to raise or lower flags and who's in charge of what and how these decisions would be made, just so it's not arbitrary and, you know, just brought to the council table. There would be some reasoning behind why, uh, certain decision is made.
So, it's like, you're saying, we never had a policy before?
No.
We did have a policy before.
Or I mean, you know, not something in writing, I mean.
Yeah, we had a policy, we had a policy in writing. It was just, it was time to update it. Like Nathan said, it was 2002.
Okay.
And we decided we better update it. It tells you where you can, um...
Yeah.
A few different other, a few different scenarios.
Sure.
And, uh... Actually Terrace Bay copied Marathon, Marathon. So, it's well approved.
Marathon probably copied something else.
And, um...
So, all those in favor? Carried. Resolution 2001-21, or 201-21, sorry about that. Moved by Councillor Morrow, seconded by Councillor Steffurek, that bylaw 27-2021 being a bylaw to regulate animal control and to ensure responsible pet ownership in township describer be given first, second, third, and final reading and enacted. Discussion? All those in favor? Carried. I'm glad to see that bench back here by the... Dog area there, you know? Somebody mentioned that would be good for... Someone that may needs to sit down, and the genter might.
That's a nice bench, I've seen that there.
Right, yeah. Okay, we will move on to committee of the whole department reports and committee board minutes. Community Economic Development Manager report.
Over here, we have a recommendation from the Community Economic Development Manager that council accept the invoice amount of $5,763, including applicable taxes from Nesbit Contracting, regarding the picture of the curvature needing to be completed within the Discovery Center's VR car. In terms of putting it into context here again, this was, uh, warranty work that we, uh, wanted, uh, completed, from, uh, Finway Contracting and, uh... It, the timing was such that we needed that to be done really quickly because in that whole area with all the curvature had lights that were going to be tied into the system's, um... Virtual, uh, reality, you know, interface there. That was a, a VR car, uh, uh, technical setup there. So, um... Part of the challenge again was in order to get that work completed quickly so there wouldn't be any delays when we had that VR installation done at the, uh, at the site. So, um... We essentially needed to get that done fixed as soon as possible. Unfortunately, Nesbit Contracting was able to do that very quickly. The other good news is, uh, our contract administrators determined that, uh, uh, there was also about $4,000 that, uh, uh, should be credited to us. So, that will help cover some of this, uh, expense as well. So...
So, that's, that's recoverable from Finway than that $4,000?
Yes.
What was their reason for not, uh, warranting it?
And, I, I, I think it was again on the list. We do have a list of deficiencies and, um... I think, uh, the, the challenge was again, just getting it done as soon as possible. And, uh, they did provide the material. They were stating that, uh... Again, that it was done as per the contract and, you know, that's where it becomes difficult. And, you know, in order, in order to just step out of that debate, we needed that work done very quickly, otherwise we would have lost our window to get the, the tech installed at that time. So, that's, uh... Again, part of the challenge. Again, uh, we have a contract administration through number 10 that's, uh, supposed to, uh... Step in as a third party for any sort of defects or anything on the site. And, um... We have been going back and forth quite a bit over a number of issues there. But, uh... Not to go into all the details again, or into those, uh... Deficiencies there. It's, uh, something that is being addressed. Um, again, it's always a challenge because we're fighting that it is deficiency and of course, the contractor will say, "It's not a deficiency."
So, in the end, we'll have a finished product that we can be proud of?
Yes, yes.
So, the recommendation is to go ahead and pay that? Everybody's okay on that one? Doug?
Yes.
Okay. Recreation Program Report, Heritage Days 2022.
Simple, straightforward report here just essentially to, uh, have council acknowledge that the dates, uh, July 15 to 24th will be, uh... Will be ready for the Heritage Days Festival. I mean, we're going to be planning now. Hopefully, there's not going to be anything that's, uh, going to, uh... Prevent Heritage Days from being held in 2022. Touch wood?
Could be a dead one.
Yep, certainly do want to, uh... Especially look for funding in order to make it a real...
We need to look for funding and we need some, uh... Well, as we go on to the next one, we need some more volunteers to step up. So, number three, Recreation Program Report.
Here's a recommendation to approve Ray Jeanette as a member of the Recreation and Festivals Committee.
Yeah, Ray. And we all know Ray will be an excellent, uh... Committee member and benefit to Heritage Days. As all works, Ray? Yeah, anybody's listening, we... We need, we need some more, we're going to need lots of help.
Yep.
Going into this next year. It's, uh, it's going to be big for our community, so... We can't do it, we can't do it with two or three committee members.
Maybe Evan should look at hosting it as like its own entity. Like, "Hey, do you want to help plan the 30th anniversary of Heritage Days?" You might get people more enticed that way instead of, "Hey, join the rest of festivals" in whatever committee meeting or whatever, you know?
Yeah, he's been, he's been, I know he's been working with a few people and, uh... You're, you're right.
Yeah.
30th? Yeah, it's the 30th.
Then it's less committal that way? You know? Like, you're going to do it up until there and then maybe some people stay and they love it and you're going to lose a bunch. But if there's like talent or whatever, that's great. And you know what? That's, uh, that's what ended up happening, I think, uh... About two years before, you know? We just had a group of people that kind of just sat in for...
Specifically?
Specifically for Heritage Days. And you know what? It's, uh... That's fine too, right? Uh, we're quite, again, uh... Especially the Recreation and Festivals Committee is quite flexible, I'd imagine. Uh, I, I know with that specific committee, we've had a, a challenge recruiting volunteers. So, the current ones who are there have been quite dedicated to keep showing up.
Definitely.
I hear you're the ones, I have never seen a bad volunteer. Never.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on. Number four, Senior Program Coordinator Report, June. Yeah, I can give an update on that. There's some stuff in the report that we covered at the last meeting. I did get an update on what's going on. And, uh, we're currently open for coffee drop-in in our building here in Municipal Center. But, uh, that hasn't been well attended. But, I mean, we just get going on it, so be expected. Our barbecues that we started up in, uh... In July are, are well received and well attended. So, that'll be ongoing for the rest of the summer. We're, uh, working, uh... On a grant for virtual programming, which will include chair yoga and, uh... And other virtual reality programs. So, that'll be more opportunities for, for seniors in our community. Our membership drive will start in November. We're currently at 310 members, which is, which is huge. No one ever expected us to reach that number. But, the drive will, will continue in November. Our Facebook numbers are good. It's, I see that there was over 2,000 people reached, uh, on our Facebook site. There will be a survey, uh, done in the fall to, to decide if we're going to have a Christmas party. So, uh, no active programs right now until, you know, we, we figure out what's, what's happening on August 7th, like you said.
Around that date, yeah.
Yeah, so if, if, uh... So, there's no active programs in, in September, we'll decide. And coffee drop-in, again, is the only activity allowed. And the schedule, any schedule changes or... Or the schedule for coffee drop-in is posted on Facebook, so... Okay, thanks for that, Jeff. Anything to add to that, Nathan? Okay. Um, number five, bylaw report. See it there? Uh, what is posted, three envelopes referred to that under miscellaneous investigations? Or is that just a misplaced, uh... Item there?
On doors.
Sorry?
On doors.
On doors, okay.
As our notice is on the door.
Okay. Okay, hearing, uh... Number six, building permit and demolition permit report.
Pretty straightforward there. Looks like it's only... How's in July? For a fitness center.
Number seven, describer fire department activity reports. Fire chiefs here, if you want to... Ask them anything? Any fire, forest fire activity, Ken? Since this report or...
Since this report?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you, there, there are a couple listed in the, at the June, but we have had, uh... Two or three more minor incidents in, in July.
Minor fires, okay. How, how are, how are the fires around here? Do you, do you get an update on that?
Well, the, uh, yeah, everything's, uh, under control. I'm the only one that's active, uh, north of Kaver's right now.
Okay.
I think our big concern right now is lightning strikes.
Yeah.
You know, with the, uh, the electrical activity we're having all week. So, they, they are doing flyovers quite frequently with water planes, just to keep an eye on them.
Yeah. Well, I could smell smoke all the way from Sudbury to here yesterday.
It's, uh, we're, we're blanketed from, from one end of the country to the other, isn't it?
Yeah. Red lake's bad, and there's one going out of travel.
I was on the Dead Horse on Saturday, about 28 kilometers in, and the smoke was pretty heavy there.
It's coming from all over, up, down.
All over.
You're going to find it hard breathing and all that. Just stay in your house, close your windows. It's only really you can do for now.
Yeah.
I mean, I thought, actually, two nights ago, I had, I, I was from that.
Yeah.
Okay, no more questions on his activity reports. We have, um, describer fire department purchase request, mobile radios.
Recommendation from the fire chief that council authorize the purchase of two Motorola XVR5550E mobile radios from CRC Communications at a cost of $1,198.99 each, plus HSD.
Yeah, and again, this will fall in... It's, uh, it will fall into the bunch, it will fall into the bunch.
Yeah.
Talk to, uh... Yeah, about it today. Okay. Are these, are these replacements, Ken, or additional?
These are, uh, two replacements. One of them's a direct replacement for an old unit.
Right.
And if you recall, we picked up that rescue truck back in December.
Yeah.
We've got a, a borrowed radio installed in it right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we'd like to replace it.
Okay, number nine.
Another recommendation from the fire chief that council authorize the purchase of Midian Electronics parrot repeater from Spectrum Group at a cost of $1,350 plus HSD.
This is also far out of the budget.
This is also part of the budget? Number ten? What, excuse me, sorry, uh, getting back to that, I'm just curious what this parrot repeater, what is it?
This is a, uh, a machine that records on our paging system, takes that recording and then rebroadcasts it several times.
Oh, I see.
Uh, without, uh, without somebody having to go into the fire station and, and, uh, start operating the, the radio by themselves.
Right.
The other thing that it does is it'll rebroadcast, uh, the signal into areas where we don't have a good signal now.
So that's something that has not ever been here?
No, we've never had one of these before.
Right, okay. Okay, number ten.
Recommendation from the Fire Chief to authorize the purchase of eight classroom tables from Wilson Business Solutions at a cost of three thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-two cents plus HSD.
Again, it's part of the budget.
Schools weren't getting rid of tables?
What's that?
I said the schools weren't getting rid of tables? No? Just keep.
Well, I think a lot of this has to do with this facility being more of a training center than it ever was.
Yes, training, training has to take place locally here now instead of people going away to the fire.
Yeah. And number eleven is fire hose request.
Here's a recommendation that Council authorized the purchase of five lengths of sixty-five millimeter fire hose from Dark one thousand two hundred degrees at a cost of one thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty cents plus HSD.
That again is part of the budget. Okay, number twelve. Um, the OPP Quarterly Reports. Not sure everybody read them? Good reading?
Always interesting.
No major crimes in our town. All was good. Hearing no discussion, we'll move right into question period. Do you have anything?
Nope.
Nothing, eh, okay. Uh, communications.
Number three?
Number three, um, Terrace Bay Fish Derby Committee Donation Request. What do we use?
Typically a t-shirt and a baseball cap.
Are we good with that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we're good with that?
Number four was interesting.
Yeah, right.
Raising the, uh, legal driving gauge. Yeah, I'm staying out of that one.
Yeah, for sure.
That'll be a tough one.
Makes sense for their, uh, council to put that forward, that unfortunate accident.
Yeah, that was unfortunate.
Number two was a request from, uh, PGM, uh, uh, mine their Marathon Palladium Project, want a, uh, letter of support?
Yeah. Four hundred permanent jobs in the region.
Yeah, we can, uh.
Yeah, I would say.
Without doubt.
Definitely.
Want to get back to that?
Okay. Rising, uh, number nine, rising costs of building materials, but I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-one.
Right.
I, I think it's coming down now, though.
It's going back up again, I think, with all these fires and stuff.
Lots on burn.
Yeah. Especially in DC.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah. Supply and demand. That's, that's what's driving that.
Okay, hearing.
I don't think they'll rule anything at all.
Hearing no more on communications then, we'll move into unfinished business, uh, number one there, we we talked about it, um, last meeting, I believe.
Yeah.
Can we come up with any solution now?
Uh, I, I really personally don't think we, no, we should support it, so. He can do his lobbying in the House of Commons.
Yeah. He's a member of Parliament, this gentleman.
Yeah, yeah. For the new West Minister, Bernie, so. Yeah, can sort that out.
Everybody's on board with that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, number two, budget.
Yes, currently for budget, uh, based on our discussions, it looks like it's, uh, aimed to be in September. With regard to any specific questions on, uh, again, the, uh, timing of this, um, my suggestion again would be, uh, you'd likely want a response from the Treasurer with regard to this. If there are any, uh, and I think the best way to, to deal with that is probably through a staff report that can go into those details, and, uh, I imagine what council would want to see again is what are the next, uh, milestones, when you would want to have the next meeting and, uh, ultimately, when it's aimed to be passed? If there's any other questions, what I'll do is I could write them down now and have the Treasurer work on that report to provide to you, uh, specifically answering any questions in the budget process.
Yeah, because you're on holidays, correct?
Yes, in August.
Yes, so there will be no meetings then?
There, there still can be meetings, I, depending on the date, I would have to join virtually, but, uh, there most certainly would be, uh, definitely, uh, special council meetings with some business that may, uh, have to happen in August, so.
In regards to budget?
Possibly budget, it could possibly be any other budget business arise.
Yeah.
So you're thinking, we're passing a budget end of September, beginning of September, middle, tax bills go out October
and November would be akin to last year.
So moving forward for next year, should we set some more stricter? Is that like a milestone, like how you said, the milestone dates, so it's like, we're not pushing so close to Christmas again?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have that discussion after the budget is passed.
Okay.
What? But I've had a bit of a discussion with Nathan, I've had a discussion with, uh, Marlene. We're gonna have that discussion after the budget is passed this year, of what needs to be done for the budget to be passed in April.
Yeah.
We're gonna work collectively. And, uh, I think, I think it can be done and all that, I mean, this year, I look back, I look back, actually, I believe it was this morning, or if it wasn't this morning, it was yesterday morning, my days and nights are mixed up, but um, I think, believe it was September twenty-fourth last year that, that budget was passed, so. Yeah, she, um, everybody seems to be willing to, uh, work collectively to get it done.
Yeah, I just want to have that discussion.
Better processed, I mean, and, and everybody wants to get, to get it done, and I'll tell you, I, I, I hated it. I hated it as, as a counselor and as the mayor, I really hate it because it's really hard to, to, uh, work with it and as, uh, as a first time, as a first time counselor, never mind first time mayor, um.
Yeah, it's not an enjoyable process.
It's an important piece.
To be done.
Not adorable, but it's a necessary.
It's a necessary, it's a necessary thing, but.
But I mean, um, everybody's, uh, on board with, uh, fixing the issue, so.
Okay, good.
Okay. So with the time being, do you want to have that discussion later, or do you want to report, or?
I mean, as long as personally, I'd just like to know why we're at this stage again, you know? That's just, I don't know if anyone else is curious as to, to that.
How much is, you know, over our hands?
Yeah, like last year was exceptional circumstances, but I don't know if you could chalk this year up to exceptional circumstances for the majority of the year, I know there was stay-at-home orders and that kind of stuff and whatever, but.
I'll ask the Treasurer to prepare a, uh, a report, uh, just as an update on the budget, just like how we have any act-up project reports, uh.
Yeah, because.
This is an update.
We left that last meeting and I felt like we had the, we had some momentum going and then it was just nothing.
Sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, with that, that is the end of our meeting, but we have to get back in the camera, so. Resolution two thousand and one dash twenty-one?
Two thousand and two.
Or two hundred and one, what's with the?
Two hundred and two.
Two hundred and two?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Cecilia. Resolution two hundred and two dash twenty-one, moved by Counselor Morrow, seconded by Counselors Stupery. That, that closed meeting, resume it this time. All those in favor? Carried. We're back to the land.